I pledge... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board and committee reports.
Yeah, I have quite a few. So... I have a media committee update. Susan is here, I just thought she was in the office. She sent a note out to all the other chairs, asking the chairs or their designee of committees to come to a training session that she's holding to learn how to use the recording device so she can upload town meetings to the website and also to be aired on the TV stations. So that's a goal, very excited about that. The rec committee, I have an update for the rec committee. They're formulating a business plan for the field house. And the goal is to have it to the CPC for possible consideration to an spring annual town meeting. And then I have a big update from Triton. So I attended a district communication meeting, and I'm not quite sure how much we want to cover tonight, but I can talk about it to you as soon as I can. I attended the district communication meeting with Gene Case and Frank Remley from the finance committee. Neil Harrington is going to represent all three municipalities at the upcoming negotiations for us.
So does Neil do that?
He's done it in the past, yeah. The district was very pleased that he was going to do it. I guess he has a strong background in that. So Ellen, is it possible that we could send him a note to thank him?
Sure.
Representative, thank you. I specifically, I attended the finance committee meeting last week, and it was brought up by a resident at that meeting that there was concern about big capital expenditures coming down the road for Triton. And I specifically asked the superintendent that, is what is on the horizon for Triton? And he said, as of right now, there are no upcoming capital expenditures that have been identified for Triton.
And we, Tracy, and I asked that, what was it, almost the end of last year? And it was the same then, too, so there's nothing going on.
Nothing's changed. One thing that the school committee is in the process of doing, and what they would like to do, is update the regional agreement between the three towns in Triton. And there's a couple of things that they need, that they need from us. They need a representative from the board of, they want a representative from the board of selectmen, one representative from the finance committee, and the town administrator to participate in meetings to renegotiate the agreement. Now, I have, I have that here. They have... They started with their, what they would like to do with their track changes. So what we need to do is we need to look through this, see what their changes are, decide what we want and what we don't want, and we need to go through it and get the town administrator, and track our own changes. So they want all three towns to go through it, decide what we like, what we don't like, what we want to add, what we don't want to add, and then send it, all three towns, to send it to the district. It's very particular. So the first draft, he sent his first draft with track changes, we need to work from that, that document, and make our track changes and send it back to Brian. He's going to take our document, combine it with what Raleigh and Salisbury sends, and use that as a starting point for discussions. And this is something that's going to take probably years before the agreement is passed up.
Are they looking to change, like, the formula?
Well, there's several things. So the notable changes that I saw right here is that it provides for the involvement of all three towns in the filling of a vacancy not filled by election. Like what happened with Maureen Preffernan. We, the board of selectmen, along with our representatives of the school committees, sat and we voted her in. What this, what they're proposing is that this provides for the involvement of all three towns that's not filled. So similar to how when we have an election for a school committee member, all three towns vote. So what they're proposing is that we sit, the board, the board in whatever town it is, so it could be Raleigh, it could be Salisbury, their board of selectmen sits, their elected officials, or their elected school committee members, and then one school committee member, I think it was one, from each town, yeah, one other from each town, and they all have a vote. So that was up to debate.
Definitely complicated to me, but...
Yeah, well, the logic behind it, from the district standpoint, was that it's more representative of how a vote would go. So when you have a vote for a school committee seat, you have all three towns voting. So here, you're going to appoint somebody, and it's only for a year until they have to run that team anyway. But at least it's kind of similar to, it kind of mirrors what the district is doing, how it elect people.
Do they put a timeline on this one, we have to?
No, oh, this is like, it's going to be a year. No, he didn't give me any time, yeah. They want to institute a majority voting to prevent a single vote from preventing the closing of an elementary school, or a program, or reducing personnel or supplies. They want to create a five-year capital development plan, which I think is good. They want to create a landlord-tenant agreement. They need a working group for this document. Again, they want it comprised of one board of selectmen, one finance committee, and the town administrator to sit on that. That, they want to propose to change the apportionment of capital expenditures to a five-year enrollment rolling average. That, as you can determine, had quite a bit of dialogue, and I'm not... From, I'm not, I don't like the idea, I like the way it is now. If the regional, all right, so this clarifies language as to how assessments are calculated, so if the regional, but if we change, what I did learn is that if we change the way that the assessments are done to the three towns, and it, the agreement dictates how the apportements are split up, it has to be approved by all three towns at their school committee meeting, and it has to pass that way. Right now, the way it sits is it's two-thirds. So it's a two-thirds vote passes the town budget. And this is just for capital expenditures now, not operating expenditures, just capital expenditures. So that, to me, that tells me that any one town can hold that, hold that district down. And I don't particularly like that, I think it gives one town way too much power to control it.
I was on the board when we restructured the agreement from the last time.
In 2006?
One of my very first questions was, is this it? We're not going to be redoing this again, correct? And they said yes. So I would like to have that discussion.
Yeah, but Chuck, that, that's not good for anything. You can't have an agreement that never have updated, or, I mean, technology changes, there was no capital plan. I mean, it's going to be good in it, too. One of the other things that it says is it's going to change the due date of the budget from February 28th, and the final budget is to be sent to the town by March 30th. I don't think that's going to work for a couple of other towns getting close, so that's... Again, these are all their proposed. It establishes the right of a representative of the school district to address a town meeting at which the school district budget is to be discussed. I don't think that's going to fly because it goes, Salisbury has a bylaw against that, so I don't think that's going to be cut out. It recognizes the need for the town to identify what kind of annual report will be helpful, so they're going to provide you the reports to, you know, each study. Price is going to work with you, is what you need, and he'll give it to you, and the same thing for the other two towns. It proposes a broader inclusive membership of the communications committee, and clarifies responsibilities for the calling of meetings, so... And it creates a new section requiring a regular review of this agreement every five years, or when somebody else, one of the member towns wants to call it. So, this is a big, big job. And we need to have, so what we need to do is we can determine two working groups. One to work on the agreement, the amended agreement, and another one to work on the landlord-tenant.
Did they mention when the last regional agreement between other regional schools, when the agreement has ever been changed, has it been done recently?
Other, what do you mean, other school districts?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure, they have.
I'm curious to see, it's not that easy to...
Regularly, yeah.
Yeah, this one...
Yeah, it was a big deal, last time we went to...
Yeah, this was, that's what I was looking for.
Three-party negotiations, that always is going to work.
The original agreement was adopted in 1966, it was amended in 1993, it was reviewed again in 1997, and it was amended again in 2006. So it's been 10 years since anybody's taken a look at it. So, I mean, I think it's a good thing that we look at it, but I'm not...
So you want to jump on that committee?
Which one?
Sounds like you already are.
It's hard, though, we have to remember, when we were looking at the agreement and pushing so hard, when we were paying a lot of money, oh, we wanted to listen. Now suddenly everyone wants to listen.
Well, we're on the other end of that now. There's another, there are other two towns that haven't gotten, and I mean, and our enrollment is down. The big thing, the reason why I don't like the fact to move from the way that it's now, we determine the apportionment now to this, to be dictated by the regional agreement, because it gives too much power to one town, any one town, to hold up the whole district.
Well, I mean, it also almost ends up, are they speaking about almost each town paying, you know, a third, a third, and a third?
No.
Okay.
No, and it's, right now, they're...
But it sounds like they're doing an averages...
They wanted, well, this is for capital expenditures, they want to do a rolling average. It's not touching operational expenditures, that's, I think, maybe steps.
How much of the budget is the capital side?
I don't know. I just went to this meeting, I got this document, I typed up some notes, and I... And you were all emailed this, so everybody got a copy of it, so if you, if you look at it, just so you know, you have to read the whole thing, these little blue boxes, it tells you what they are. Update to recognize.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a quick little...
Thanks for attending that.
You're welcome, wait a minute, let me see if there's anything else I have to say. I don't think, I think that's it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, the stadium, we all know about the stadium.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay. That's it.
I reached out to the MBTA, and I've not gotten any message back from them yet, so I've not pursued that very far. I've not been chasing them down, but I've left them two messages now. They may have been calling back, and it's a number that I just don't answer.
Don't give them those beat up.
No, I just, when I don't recognize the phone call.
But they'll leave you a message, they should leave you a message.
They haven't yet.
I attended the Pink House meeting, not going to get into details because they're here tonight, we will get into that a little later. And I had a Boy Scout meeting for Eagle Scout projects, and this is the good part of the job, I really enjoy this. And we came up with two projects. There is a trail between Triton Regional School and the soccer field, and it needs to be upgraded. They have to come in front of us, we have to give them permission, they have to go in front of Concom, get their permission. I've already started that ball rolling, hopefully it will be on the agenda for next selectmen's meeting. The next project is the fishways along the dam in Locken Road. Three of the concrete fishways, I'm not exactly sure what the length is, yeah, it's okay, have fallen over, roots have gotten in there, and they need to be done. And that would be a wonderful Eagle Scout project. So I'll aim them in that direction, and I'll be back to you with a further report when we get it in front of us.
Can you, can I ask, the next time you talk to the Boy Scouts, can you ask them if anyone is interested in helping with the media, the media committee? We'd like to have them even film, like, what they do.
I'm not sure if there is a badge for that, but I do know the Eagle Scout projects, they need a project that takes a thousand hours.
Oh, this is for an Eagle Scout project?
That's a lot of...
Yeah, no, this is just something for them to, to community service and to get what they do out. So if they can film it, or if they're attending any of these events, we can film it for them and get it on TV and, and, you know...
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
The Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, and other towns participate in that.
Okay, no public hearings, town administrator's report?
Sure, I just wanted to give you an update on the purchase of Protection Two property. We are rescheduled to close this Friday, so hopefully we'll have that...
Oh, we got that, we got that.
Cool.
Yep, they've cleared the issues with the title, and we're also waiting for a DOR waiver, but Senator Tarz's office is helping us get that, expedite that, so hopefully we'll be closed on Friday. Also, wanted to let you know that in terms of tax collections, 2012 to 2015 are now 100% collected. So we spent the better part of the last three years collecting all of the delinquent-backed taxes, and those years are up to 100%. The only outstanding taxes we have now are for 2016, we've only got 19 accounts left, and those are being prepared for advertising and tax-taking now. So we've really got an expedited in place that the takings are current timely, and our collection percentages are where they should be, yeah.
You know, Tracy, if you think about it, you know, with this board and your leadership and all the people that were assembled at town hall, if you look at things such as that, and we started firing, what, $1.9 million this year, which is a long way from what it was, what, seven years ago? I mean, seven or nine years ago?
Five.
Five years ago. And the roads are being paved, and I could probably keep going and going and going. We're trying to work towards a reasonable solution to moving forward with municipal building projects. And I can remember when, you know, the three new selectmen came on, and it was not hard, but it was different. And the thing I have to say is the board had no agendas, and we moved forward in a very strong way.
Only to benefit the town in doing it.
Well, and I think that's a good statement. And the three selectmen now certainly have, you know, learned their ways and felt their way forward, so, I mean, it's pretty good, I can't, I, it's as good as I think you can get.
You mentioned roads, and just a little shout-out to the DPDW, they have paved over 40% of the town roads in two seasons. So when we give them the resources that they need to do it, they really...
And that was by the checks.
Get it out of the park, for sure, yeah.
Yep, well, it was good check.
Also, Gene Case asked me, I had an opportunity to meet with him earlier today, to hand out a draft copy of your financing plan for the police station town hall project. They, he made a presentation, I think it was last Monday night, but they refined some of the numbers, so they wanted to make sure that you had a preliminary copy of that. And that's it?
That's all right, I will admit that I happen to be, we even had a chance to kind of look at this, and it's pretty good. We'll give them one of these to Jen, so... Okay, well, thank you. Under new business, we have a request for public property use special permits. Julie, are you here tonight?
I am.
How are you?
Good.
This is Field Training Studio, Mary McRuskin report, it's a River Run Half Marathon, it's Sunday, May 7th, 2017, from 9:30 to 12:30 PM. Ellen is everything, your honor. Now, you folks were the folks that kind of painted, and we're going to use signs.
We're going to use comments and signs, there'll be no, no paint, promised.
So I would entertain a motion from the board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
What about the music?
That's in the second part of this.
Oh, that's in the different one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor? In a subsequent motion, request for special permits, Julie again, Field Training Studio. Permission to allow music to be played from a speaker at the corner of Hanover Street and High Road during the River Run Marathon Road Race, which would be Sunday, May 7th, 2017, from 9:30 to 12:30 PM. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second of all. Any discussion?
I think it's great. I've run lots of marathons, having some support music is never a bad thing.
So it's loud enough that it follows with the whole race?
Did we have an issue with that last year?
I don't think they did, did they?
We didn't get any feedback, we notified all the budding neighbors around the whole park and put little flyers in their mailbox letting them know that we'd be doing it, and...
We have no complaints. I'm just going to ask Mike, no complaints, right?
Thank you, two thumbs up, you do that.
At least for one thing.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Request for public property use special permits. Michael, you here tonight?
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Post.
Good luck.
It's for loco sports. What's loco stand for, just being loco, or?
Just means...
From Newwack and De'Antra, Hard Side Half Marathon Road Race, Sunday. And this one's on November the 13th, 2016, from 9 o'clock AM to 11:15 AM. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion, once again, don't paint the roads.
Correct.
Is this going to run off the town? Or is it through Newbury, in other towns, it's a half marathon?
Right.
Yeah, the rights on that.
There's a map there, I think, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Everything in order, Ellen? So where do we stand? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck. So you'd like local licenses, I'll take them as a bunch to the same entity. Rupified apartment, Protection Two, the first local licenses for a, I don't know if I should say surprise party, but Friday, October 14th, 2016, from 7 o'clock to 11 PM. The next one is Saturday, November 5th, 2016, from 5 to 9 PM.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion?
The surprise is which one do you take?
Which one are you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Susan Neuss, our parking clerk, among a myriad of other things, has a proposal for parking permits and fee changes or updates. So do you want to get up and tell us, or do you want us to just go along with what we saw?
Ellen, did you include what I put in the back? Of course. Okay, so I took the opportunity to take a look back, which is...
Susan, can you get up here a little so that it picks you up, that picks us? You up?
I took the opportunity to look back on parking permits and the fees that were charged for the town neighborhood. I know, at least in my time here, which has been close to 13 years, starting on a part-time basis, it has never been changed, and I believe it has been much longer than that, that we have not touched the fees. I wanted to also look at the opportunity to offer senior citizens a different price than ordinary residents, as well as charge a replacement fee for stickers that are lost, cars that are sold, et cetera, because we don't charge for that right now. What this would also do is allow us to mail any parking permits out that don't include the self-addressed stamped envelope, they're held at the town's clerk's office right now. When they don't include those stamps, until they get around to picking them up. It would also allow us to issue temporary parking permits immediately, instead of them waiting for their parking permit to mail. So I'm recommending that we increase for our residents that are approved per our bylaw to $25 versus 20.
Cool.
Making the, allowing the senior citizen discount of $20 for 5 and older, and charging a $5 replacement sticker.
And putting it in the back of your window, right?
Yes, also changing the placement of it to help with enforcement. Right now, it's the lower-left windshield, which, number one, we really shouldn't be putting stickers on windshield, but also, number two, it helps police with enforcement in seeing the stickers a lot easier for residents that are placing it on the back, but don't go over the left corner.
Great, thanks, Susan.
Sure, thank you.
Julie, we need a motion, right? Motion?
Motion to, are we putting it in the meeting, or is it just up to us? Motion to approve the changes suggested by the parking clerk.
Second?
Second.
All, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Must have done a wonderful job explaining, you know, this discussion. Rochelle Johnson, steering committee of the Support for the Pink House, I guess Chuck went to a meeting. So you would like to explain, you're going to ask me to come up here a little so that the camera picks you up.
Hi, it's Rochelle Joseph, just in case, talking here. So we just wanted to, again, we tried to come and meet with you, and it's been a couple of months process. So originally, we just wanted to kind of introduce ourselves as the steering committee for Support the Pink House. So Allison Olden, who is founder of the Facebook page that kind of started everything, and Lee Dempsey, who lives out in LA, and I'm, you know, who was a coach for Triton, among many other things. Hoover, who's got his own design firm in downtown, and was a teacher for many years, and has it in downtown, we're very proud. So, and myself, who, I'm a very resident, I bought a house in Plano about three years ago after renting for a couple of years, and love living here, I love the community. And this has certainly gotten me to introduce to many people, so it's been a journey of the process. I didn't know if you wanted to report what you saw.
Well, why don't you, and what I have, or what the correspondence that I've talked about with Peter, obviously, and Peter's talked to you, everyone might not be totally up to speed on what you'd like to do for the Pink House.
I'm going to, okay, great, but I, first of all...
You've got a chance now, because you're right in front of that, to tell a lot of people.
Right, okay. First of all, Mr. Trump, I just wanted to give you a brochure, I have one for you, if you'd like, that will tell you kind of the basic facts about the Pink House, and just, I just wasn't sure what you might want me to say. We just wanted to introduce ourselves, tell you what we hear and answer any questions.
Delicious.
We're not coming to be looking for anything. So the Pink House, as you know, is right out there on Fullerton Turnpike, and it has been somewhat abandoned, although owned since 2011 by the Parker River Wildlife Refuge. And it certainly was our current refuge manager, Will Pearson, you know, he's been there for about two years, but there was no one before him, and then a couple before where this is purchased.
Green, Taylor.
Yeah, so at this point, he kind of inherited that, is one of the many things, I'm sure it was on his list when he got into office there. So, anyway, there was an article in the Daily News of a couple of years ago about that there were some plans, thank you, Eric, to Eric, who designed these, and our logo, and our bumper stickers, and everything else.
Thank you.
And our T-shirts, did a terrific job. We had one of yours, we had our... Merchant window decals and everything, so people could show their support. But, anyway, so the house, there was an article in the Daily News that they were thinking of taking it down, that they didn't have a use for it, or whatever. And so Allison had started a Facebook page, a discussion group, just, you know, what do you think about this? And I liked it, I liked the page, but I noticed, being a person who has done social media for a living at points, how quickly, it's one thing for people to like a page, but it was like 200 people, then, you know, a week and a half, it was 400, it went up to 800, 850, and it was 1,000. And many of those people were writing their stories of how much this house means to them, it's in their memories, it's what they show their kids, what they imagine it to be, how they feel ownership in a way, and I think the abandonness lends itself to that. So we thought, wow, this, there's a lot of people. And Dyke Henderson from the, who had done the original article, came out to do another. So there were several of us who met and just talked to him a little bit, along with Bill Peterson in front of the house, and that was Front Page News. And kind of from there, Peterson, who had been in his position for about six months, decided to have a public meeting in October of 2015, one year ago. And just to answer questions, and there was a lot of people from Newbury Port Historical Committee Society there, there was some local builders, there were some who did house renovation, there was, you know, some of the average public, but there was several interested parties, and it was reasonably populated, maybe 35 people or so. And everybody, you know, you showed slides of the house, you know, answered some questions, but basically, many people there had suggestions of what it could be, or what they'd like to see, or can't we help save it for this, or can't we keep it in the community? And basically, his answer was just a no to every single one of those, that it just wasn't something they wanted to do. So, but winter was coming, and fearing that it was going to be winter like the two years previous, I just talked to him a little bit about what can happen if you're not taking it down. if you're not taking it down, if this thing could, something else could happen, can we fortify it somehow? And the holidays came and went, we talked, didn't get in there until January. So when we realized that something momentum was starting, I just thought, let's, the first thing to do is find out, is the house structurally sound? Before you begin a, hey, let's try to save this. So I walked through with one of the people who'd shown up that night, my neighbor, and you may know him, Bill Barrett, from Plano Island Construction. And I knew and trust his opinion. I was able to be in communication with Bill Peterson and said, hey, can I walk through this with you guys? But Bill Barrett would like to take a look and just see really what is the condition of the house. And he said, yes. So on January 8th, Bill Barrett and Bill Peterson and I walked through the house from the basement all the way to the cupola. We looked through everything, every window opened, every door, very thorough. He's not, it's not inspection, but just, you know, eyeballing the envelope to see cause and the basic bones. And he was walked out in the driveway afterwards and said, I can't believe that it's completely sound. There are not cracks in the foundation, the fireplace was bigger than it's, I expected cracks in the chimney or somewhere, you know, the platform in front of it. And I said, it's fine. There's minimal hazardous materials and things in there. I've gotten that report, it's 4% of asbestos in the blue around the windows. And Dave went in and counted that there was eight windows. It's, it's nothing, you know, unusual. And so he even said it could be moved, you know, nobody wants to move it, it's a part of the vista, is what, what things is, but it was sound enough to move, that was the point. So we said, okay, it's sound. And we began to form the steering committee, and we started to meet and kind of talk about what we could do. And Bill Peterson called me very shortly after February and said, you know, I'm gonna take that last cottage down at the end of the island. I'd like to put yours on the same schedule, do you need more time? And I said, yes. And so to his credit, he did give me more time, give us more time. And we started to scramble, we started to meet every single week, four months on end, and we talked to just about everybody there was. You know, National Registry, historical stuff, we were talking to other wildlife refuges, we were talking to everybody, you know, city planners, people. And I gotta tell you, people are interested, you know, I joked from Marblehead to Maine, but it's true. There are people who consider this thing, it is on Newbury soil, the jewel of the area. And I think one of the things I wanted to say was just come here and say, do you realize how much value this thing that's on the land of, you know, that is our town, is valued by people who live here, not just residents, but people who visit here, people who come from far and wide. So during Lit Fest, I thought, okay, now we've seen a lot of people on Facebook, we're, you know, talking to everybody who's saying, bravo, we all are behind you, we would love to, all the historical committees and things, who we'd love to see this happen. We went just for a couple hours, sent 15 or so volunteers out to Pink House footboards, we got 1,000 signatures and a lot of conversations. And people said, we travel here every year, this, we would not be the same to drive out and not see it there. We took our kids, we remember it as our kid, when we were kids. So that's one of the things that I guess we want you to know. This is, you know, just, this is, these are the signatures that we have here, and there's thousands of them. And another thing is that, so it was supposed to come down in May, and when he said, do you need more time? I said, please. So he did not take it down with that other, which you probably read about that cottage, that was the last one out there. And he and I, by the way, I forgot to say that after we walked through, Bill and I went back to his office in January, after we did the walkthrough. And I said, let's sit down, let's figure out what can happen, that we have some options. So he and I, for the first time, we sat at his desk, pored over maps of the refuge, went through the exact three parcels that it is, what the, you know, is still registered for residential, I got the numbers, we looked at what land was around there, what Colby has, what the Green Belt has, what the refuge has got, what the town of Newbury has, what belongs to, is it Spencer Pierce? And all of that, and got very familiar with it. And Mr. Horton, he came up with three things that he thought would be okay with him. So I laid back.
And me, the back.
And Bill Peterson. Yes, so I do want you to know, we have a nothing hand in hand. He has been willing and was able to let us in there. And when it was sound, it was like, okay, you know, we could do a land swap, because it's federal, our hands are tied. You can't just raise the money, you can't just buy it. You can't be least a part of it, like, give us 12 inches around the house for 99 years for a buck, and we will form a foundation and care for it and maintain it like a lighthouse, maybe with a caregiver, maybe like motif number one, or it's just an iconic landmark that is part of the character of the area. Rockport would not be the same if you took that little red doling out of the town, you take a picture of it, it's a lovely town, but you identify it and we get this Rockport. This is what people identify for this area, is this little pink house. And if you have to go on our website, you can see the plethora of photos. People are inspired to write about it, it's been in New York Times, The Globe, people have written poems, people photograph it, people are painting it all the time. So it is an inspiration to people. And in that vista, with all that sky and all that salt grass stretching out to the horizon, it looks gorgeous in every light. The sunrise, the sunset, under the Milky Way, with the harvest moon coming up, under clouds. It is something that accentuates the nature behind it, if nothing more. And people see that, and that's one reason why picking it up and moving it somewhere else, it's not about that. And we just don't want like Bob Lobster to become a McDonald's next, or be taken down. This is part of why I moved here, part of why I give my money to here, why I pay taxes, why I patronize here, why I wanted to move when I had a choice to live anywhere in the country, because it's so special. And that's one of the things that does give this area a character and make it special. And we learned that we are just now, at this point, representing the voice of the people. And it's been kind of a burden as we were plowing through, trying to find ways to save this, because it is federal land. But Bill had given me three options. One was moving, one was swapping for contiguous land with very, very specific and almost in accomplishable criteria. And a third was, or if you can find me a few acres that are somewhat near my current building. Well, I could pull a lot of the boats and the things that I've got for rescue and whatever that are halfway down the island and get them closer so the next hurricane's standing, I don't have to get myself down there to help. I'd trade it for that. So for the ideas that they're putting school buses of kids on there and showing them the, they can do that now, that they said that's one of the uses. But I think it's like, we have this land, we don't wanna use that house, what can we do with the land? Here's one thing we can do, but they also are willing to trade it, so it's just a value game, a scrap to.
Well, Bill Peterson too needs to expand the footprint a little if he can there for the needs you just spoke about.
Yeah.
And they have a lot of SCA and federal students that come in and they need to maybe get some sort of bunkhouse or, you know, because your kids, you know, it's hard to house them offsite. So, but not to interrupt Rochelle, but I had to say interrupt next to Rochelle. But where I fit into this, I wanna say first, obviously, the town of Newbury right now has enough fiscal responsibilities, they're over our head.
Sure.
But certainly, you have to thank Bill Peterson for being, you know, tremendously receptive. He is a refuge manager, and sometimes refuge managers aren't particularly that way. But he's been great.
Appreciate it.
Why me, group of selectmen, as a person happened to be involved in this, and whatever Rochelle can come up with, I think, if it doesn't cost the town, if it's not a strain on any of the town resources, it might be interesting in looking at is, a lot of the group I work with on the MASH is looking for a center to continue their studies. That would be UNH, Boston University, Provincial Coastal Studies, and University of Mass, and they have no place. So it wouldn't be high travel, it wouldn't be high use, it might have something interactive in a small way and have maybe a small meeting. So, I mean, they could probably handle some of the ongoing maintenance and carrying forward the upkeep of the building, but it still doesn't provide any solutions. And all this information comes from the gentleman that I, my partner, Peter on the MASH, Peter Fippen, so.
Well, if I may, if I may answer that. First of all, one of the things is that we aren't coming here asking for, we're coming here to say, here's who we are, we want to make you aware. And we had hoped to come a couple months ago where, you know, we were gonna say, and we're gonna start having our first public meeting. We did not want to bring the public in until we knew, A, we had this house for a certain period of time, at least to start doing something, and that the house was sound. So when Bill and I went through the options, and I wrote them down and sent them to him and said, I just wanna make sure this is what you feel we agreed on. He wrote back and said, just change this word of this. So we had that. So that is why he, you know, he was agreeable. He did call and say, do you need more time? I said, yes, we appreciated that. During the signature campaign, we, in our version, as we've said, we've been working in harmony with the wildlife refuge. We did not want in any way for someone to paint them as the bad guys or anything. If anything, completely, they have the power to take it down, they have not. So they, and it's been a process for them like it's been a process for us, and now learning that people do value this thing. So, so what it came to was we had a meeting in May, which is when he said, let's just meet again in May. We tried to tell him where we were, we were not enough time to raise, you know, $500,000, it's not enough time. We did talk to the Green Belt, who also doesn't want, you know, they, we did go to them because they know a lot of the land in this area that could meet that criteria. They were very, very positive, they've been keeping an eye out. But we were not sure what else we could do as just regular citizens. So he said, look, I'm gonna keep it up for the summer, but I'm taking it down directly as soon as it is over. And if you could, and just kind of begged and said, can't you give us more time? What is the rush, you guys have had it for so long, this thing is building, we need more time. There's not much you can accomplish over a summer when people are gone. And he said, if you produce something significant, I will give you one more fiscal year, October 1st, 2016 to 2017. So I went to Senator Ives, Senator Tar, Congressman Moulton, and they were all on board, very helpful. Everybody's been very positive, everybody's been on board. And I just said, Congressman Moulton, you are federal, that's a federal thing, can you make a phone call that we can't do and just help us? And I can't believe that they all did get on board and do that. And I got a letter from Bill in August saying, I'm very happy to say that I got off the phone with Congressman Moulton at Senator Tar's office, and I'm going to happily give you a year. Now, at our first meet, so we said, okay, now we got time, we got lots of people, let's start to meet. And we didn't know, there was several possibilities of what could happen. We've been asked not to really talk a lot about those, but there are some options that are quite viable. And we had this first meeting, and, you know, Cal Corson-Mira showed up, the representatives as well. Apparently, they took this to Ed Markey and DC Senator Warren. So we don't understand that that's a pretty, a lot of busy people doing a lot of important things. They are all focused on helping this house in Newbury, Massachusetts. So we are, right now, I'm supporting them with information we need, because I've done an awful lot of research, as all of us have pitched in to do. And they are kind of taking it away and managing, kind of meeting with Bill and saying, now that we've got a year, you know, how can we start entertaining some of these options to put it to a gentle use? Because I just wanted to say that there is a distinction, and you may know all this, between if you keep it like a motif with nobody in it, you know, it doesn't benefit, it would be more of a benefit to have someone going in and out, but, you know, just for air and whatever. So you could have it like a lighthouse with a quietly living caregiver on the premises who simply performs that function. Or you could take it up to, and I'm sure people would like to have it be used, to a gentle use, similar to a little bit of what you're talking about, a low-profile, low-impact use, which is what we are considering and hoping for. If you take the next step to say, make it a museum or something, this now involves wheelchair accessibility, a code that's like parking, and nobody can do that because you need to have permit. So we keep the well-meaning public word, you meet every person you meet, has got an idea for what they like the house to be. We just try to say, we're carrying the ball, we're getting into this place, it's been very hopeful, very successful, we've got momentum, we're starting to have monthly meetings, but we're allowing the elected officials who are gonna need the fill, start to do a little of their magic while we just keep supporting in this regard. So we're just, that's the point that we're at. We did have our first meeting, and all of them attended. We had, obviously, you came, we had a councilman from Newburyport, we had both Cal Corson-Mira, we had Tar and Ives there, and a representative from Congressman Moulton's office. I have since had discussions with them and followed with the next concern I have, which is if you're gonna transfer this, we need to protect it more than we have against the winter. Now, Bill Peterson, I mean, sorry, Bill Barrett, the builder, has offered to be able to do a few basic things that could help it. And I've forgotten those in detail, and I've written them down, and we're gonna let Congressman Moulton's office and Senator Tar's office kind of go to bat. And it would require no extra money, the cost is minimal, he'd be doing pro bono, so electrician, in terms of taking away a few things. Now, Bill Peterson may want to do that himself, he even said if there isn't funding, which it probably is, but it's minimal cost to take care of the house while they do these negotiations. So that's kind of where we're at. We're having monthly meetings right now at Peter Hall, the last Wednesday of the month, so our next one will be on October 26th. We are doing our first little fundraiser that Allison is chairing, along with one of our volunteers, lots of people have stepped up. And it's going to be an art show and auction on the 17th, so local artists who have painted or photographed the Pink House are gonna be donating. Just as something small again, to keep the word out there, to keep spreading the word, the momentum going, because we always want an artistic aspect to be a part of this, even if it goes into some type of research, we still want people to be able to be inspired by it and to keep it going. There's potentially a coffee house, a coffee table book in the works and things like that, that would again, continue to bring tourism here and show a value to this gorgeous area that we have here, and how we care for it. And then, right after the event, so that event is November 17th, and then right after that event on the 30th, we'll have our last public meeting of the year. And we talk all the time, we need constantly, we do an enormous amount of work and things on behalf of the public, it is taking over our lives. But we feel like positive things are happening. And so I was just coming, you know, because we want you to understand how much you got here with this house. And that we are doing all the work so far, and that we just, you know, there were options of surplus and federal, you know, declaring it surplus, in which case the town of Newbury could take it, but we understand the financial situation. So we're gonna work to try to find a way for several options to make it happen. So, you know, we are available at all times and I'm happy to do, you know, answer any questions, happy to work in tandem, happy to do whatever you might need of us. Or if you have any questions for us.
I have a question. What, what is, what would you, this committee, like to have? What was your goal with this house?
I'll speak, because I.
I did.
I just, my, I think that our point is, is that we really haven't looked that far ahead. I think the reason that we've been so successful in what we've been doing is that we've been able to take one task at a time. And our first task was obviously to create awareness. Our second task was to really see what we could do and work collaboratively with the, with the refuge. And I think we've reached a point now where I think there's a lot of options that are out there, but I do think that one of the things that I think is very important to all of us, that it be a collaboration of probably the science part of it and taking care of the great MASH would be a great idea. But also to maintain the artistic culture that goes along with it and stuff, so a combination of that would be something that would, not only would it be there for the artist community to photograph and take pictures of, but it would also be a tremendous factor to help the great MASH and keep that, and preserve this, the area that it actually sits on. So there's a lot of great things that it could be. I think it's more about what we wouldn't want it to be. We wouldn't want it to turn into a resident, we wouldn't want it to turn into a commercial piece of property, we wouldn't want it to turn into anything of that. The least that we would want is to be another iconic structure like the motif, that people would come by and say, gee, there's that house that's been there for, you know, since 19, 1922, and have the spite theory that goes, the spite house theory that goes along, story that goes on with it. That would be the minimal that we would like to see. But I do think that it has a wonderful opportunity to do some of the things that Selectin Walker has talked about and that Senator Tar has talked about. So those combination of things are things that we would be very open to, and we'd really like to see it take place.
David, Rochelle, what was the owner's full name?
He gave that to you, but it was the Stott family.
No, what, can you, Stott, right?
Yes.
Can you remember her first name?
I think it was Mary Ann, but her children ended up taking it over, and I think it was Bruce.
Because I'll never forget when, early in my tenure on the ConCon, or it might have been on the plane aboard Martha, I got a notice or a letter from, if it was Mary, she had a Corps of Engineers study on the bridge. Because when they put the bridge in, it was a major title restriction. And she contested the fact that at that time, the Corps study said it wasn't really a major restriction. So she was very active, one of the good things that can't be lost, if there's some history that can be found, is she was very active and an advocate for her area and the great MASH.
Yeah, we have tapped into some history.
Right, Steve, that you, Steve, James, you're behind, you probably remember it too.
No, it's, no, yes.
Yeah, remember that, Steve? So David, nice to find out, that would give it more meaning.
Sure. We'd also, at that time, like to have little pictures of it and have as many things as we could. I think that's the other thing with the awareness piece, is that we are reaching out to anybody who has any conclusive information regarding its history. You know, we understand what the theory is, and there's been a lot of stories about it. we understand what the theory is, and there's been a lot of stories about it being haunted and a lot of stories of all kinds of things. But I think that's part of it. I think part of it is, we talked about a coffee table book, you know, not just a pictorial book, but also a book that has the history of it, that really identifies what it's all about. And that's, you know, also something that Alison has come up with a great idea, and that's another thing, there's a group, we'd like to start a committee working towards that, that could put a book together about it and its existence. And it's, you know, and really, I think Michelle said it, you know, articulated on it very nicely, how important it is. And I think we were, as a small group, were all totally amazed at people from as far away as Wisconsin and California and Phoenix, Arizona, and places like that, who said, "I can remember as a young child going on vacation there when we saw the Pink House." We knew, we knew we were going to the beach. And so I think that's, it's noted, it's noted all over the country, and I think that's been the amazing thing for us, to realize that, that in this short period of time, we've heard from people as far away, it's probably, I would say, pretty close to all 50 states in the United States, people that have been here have seen that. The Yankee Homecoming, which Alison and Eric were a big part of organizing, we had a tent set up, and people that, coming came, and some didn't know about it, and after we talked about it, they drove out there, they looked at, they came back to the, to the, to the tent that we had, and they took, they bought stickers, and they took a pamphlet with them, and they bought a picture, and they, they were just so mesmerized by the whole thing that it actually does exist. So I think that was a pretty enlightening part for us. I think that's what's really kind of generated our passion.
And we're kind of delighted that now we can start pursuing some of these creative ideas that we had, because we were pretty much under the gun. It was scheduled to be demolished, and so all of our efforts were to get the word out and to find alternatives to demolition. And now that we've accomplished that, now we can move on to the next phase. While we have people, boring options, we can start doing some of the things that you talked about, to manage history, other than have significant.
Well, I'm glad that you've come to us, because I still get some questions on it, and at least now it'll be on television, and it gives you a chance to kind of have a broader, clearer, you know, perspective for folks that are asking some of those questions. Have we got any other questions? Just one technical question. Does it tie into the septic that went out to the island, or not?
I would guess not.
No, I was in there with Bill. There is no septic. The old septic is still on there, which would have, would certainly not qualify title, title five.
Okay.
Would not, would not. It would have, that's the other thing, if we were gonna use it for anything other than iconic structure, that and the electrical is something that would have to be taken care of.
And I talked to Bill Barrett about that in detail, that it's already, you know, there is a meter on the house. There's already wires to it. It would really be just a matter of it, because those wires look like in good condition. So it'd simply be a matter of having an address to reconnect it for free. And even if he had like a basic dehumidifier running in there or something, and he's come up with another idea to get air through the house, just like a small bathroom fan down, down in the basement that would send stuff out the roof, he said it would just draw enough to maybe $20 a month, in which I'd be happy to pay, if the Refuge would allow that to keep it through the winter so it wouldn't go downhill. Now, you would have to have electricity for an occupancy permit if it was gonna do that, and also have to work something out with septic. But I've talked with them in detail about that, of if it had to ever be on stilts. At the current time, it does have a full basement, and it is not flooding even at astronomical tides anymore than all of the Plum Downs houses, that most of them are not on stilts. And that does have high ground. It is, it is upland there. Of the three parcels that make up the 9.29 acres, it is on the only upland, and it owns quite a bit along, it's like a strange triangular piece that owns quite a bit along the curve of the rest of Plum Island turnpike. But, you know, we figure it's gonna be okay, but I said, "Worst case, we gotta put it on some type of still." Can we keep it about the same, looking about the same? He said he could. You know, so thinking into the future, that you don't want this to be the situation we're in in another three years. You wanna do whatever the next choice is to keep it in perpetuity. So I think the thing that we are hoping for is for, you know, obviously, recognizing the value. And, you know, if you read some of the stories of what people write, "My parents told me Santa Claus lived in there." You know, I mean, it's just, you know, read the New York Times article. We've got all this on our website, which is, you know, "Support the Pink House, Not Save. Support the Pink House." Bill Peterson loves the support, because we're trying to support it. There's lots of articles and things on it. But secondly, that, you know, whatever ways that you can be supportive of this project going forward, because it does belong to this town. And while it's right now part of the Refuge, it can be swapped or traded, there are ways. And that's what Senator Tarr is gonna be working on with Congressman Moulton and Senator Warren, which is fantastic, that all of those people, all of them, Democratic and Republican, are on board. And they are meeting, and they've been giving hours to us, personal phone calls, meetings.
It's good that they work for us.
Exactly. But I mean, they have heard this.
But they have lots of to do.
They do.
They have lots of to do, so I've been pretty amazed.
I think it's a tribute to you guys to be able to pull together a coalition of support of that higher level. And then again, I think it's, a tremendous amount of respect goes to Bill Peterson for his participation in the whole project. So we're just gonna wait and see what happens, see how you guys do.
That was the one thing I think the four of us were very impressed with, is that this, although it's been a difficult pass, it's been a positive experience.
Very.
I don't think there's been any drawing lines in the sand and them versus us or anything like that. It's really been, from the beginning, it's been, it's been a positive experience moving forward and working in a collaboration with not only the, you know, our representatives and our armpitsmen, but also the Refuge and also the community. So that's been a nice experience.
So I'm gonna ask that you, if I, either you have a card or I'll have, Caleb Nobles, that these are media committees, and the town everybody has this little cable TV, and he had mentioned that he wanted to come out and meet you guys. And he'll do a video of you. You can tell your story. They'll film it. Once he gets it on, we'll air it on our local access TV. They'll also share it with the city of Newburyport. I'm sure they would be more than happy to run it. They'll air it on all the other channels, you know, the local areas around us, and get the word out.
And it might get picked up, but I.
And that's no cost.
David does a really good job of actually.
He's a trend alum. He's a great kid.
What I do want to say is, whatever the options are, there's several things that I've been privy to, having discussions daily with people, that we were just asked to, for now, allow the powers that be, our representatives, to do that job, and not go too far in, you know, that there are options, that there are positive options that look very realistic that are happening, and kind of not harm the process by getting too detailed about them at this time.
I understand.
But you still want it.
But the video, I think, would be great, because it's just keeping it.
Tell the story.
Keeping this topic, making people interested. That's what. And you can read some, read some of the things that people have written. You could do a job of it.
Yeah, and you can frame it as to what the historical significance of this, of this and the artistic significance of it. It doesn't have to be framed in any, any other way. It's here, and this is what it is.
And many people from, you know, from Portsmouth, from Hampton, from Rye, from all of these places, Essex Dover, a lot of city planners, a lot of historians, all are like cheering us on, like, "We love the house. We want you to save it. We want that to remain in our community." So I think you also should know that they're all behind it. And just lastly, I'll say that several of the Stotts are on our Facebook page, and they're, at first, like, gee, we can't believe our house has gotten this much attention. And now, you know, Juliette has been waxing poetic occasionally, and I know Bruce does have a place still on the island, if you know, he's down in Florida. He had said he was gonna come to our meeting, but I think he couldn't, but we waved the other day. So that's really a nice acknowledgement as well.
And I think Representative Kelkorson, when he was at the meeting, he was even wanted, said that, well, he always knew it when he was a child. His dad told him that it was the Strawberry Shortcake House. So that's, you know.
That was funny.
Yeah, it was funny, and I think that lightened up everything. But that just goes to show you the sentiment that has taken place over the years, within all small little families and small little pockets, all have different stories and different ideas about it. So it's been pretty cool.
But I can just envision that at Richdale's and at our, you know, butchery and things that we have here, postcards with that Pink House on it, I can just see, you know, that this would be something that really would identify our area.
It's great. It's, if you think if we ever had this type of cities, we would have a balanced budget, but it's awesome.
See you at the next meeting.
Oh, thank you so much. We so appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Any old business? Any citizens' concerns? We have correspondents?
Jack.
Did I hear you? Yes, yes, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Steve?
Hi, Steve. I'm Steve Van Gundy, and basically I have a question, inspired by today's story in the Daily News about the ballot question. And I sent a note to the selectmen, and it may have reflected in part my ignorance, but I was just trying to.
I haven't read that yet, so I don't know, you know, expand your thoughts.
I will. And I'm just trying to get some clarification in advance of the town meeting. This concerns Articles Nine and Ten regarding, Article Nine would need a two-thirds majority to okay the police station renovation of Town Hall. Article Ten, I guess, was blocked worth by some citizens as for a police, standalone police station. And I realize we have to go to the ballot in November to get them approved, assuming they get the two-thirds majority. And in some ways, you can rip up this letter, but the question really comes down to, what happens if both Articles Nine and Ten pass at town meeting, and then we go to the ballot and approve, what, six and a half, or whatever, seven, the big number? What gets built? Because you've got one, one group that says, "Just a police station, another article that's due, well, well, what takes precedence?"
You know, you know what's funny? Because we asked Tracy a question the other day, and it was, she answered it, and it was hard to answer, the question about the ballot. So a lot of times, because probably, I don't know answers, and maybe my boy doesn't know answers, we always look to Tracy for answers, and she tries to accommodate us with answers. Some of these answers, unless you already have the answer, has to be, you know, a question for town council, right? Unless you already have that answer.
We talked about it this morning.
With town council?
With town council and bond council are both concerned about it, but don't have a definitive answer. What they explained is, the expectation would be, and we haven't met with the moderator yet, but the expectation would be that the discussion at town meeting would be on both, that one motion would be made under Article Nine, and the discussion would be taken up on both of the articles, with the expectation being that one would prevail.
Just one, but not.
But not all.
Well, I guess that would be you make an amendment during town meeting to come up with one article to vote on, which is probably a good idea. You know, this, these projects have certainly been contentious, and I think it would be incumbent upon the board to really have a clear statement about what it is that's gonna be the outcome, because I suspect, I suspect, I don't know, but I think the people who feel strongly about just doing the police station will really get their dander, because they don't understand how, what the payoff is of police station and town renovation. And without dwelling on some sense of distrust, which I've heard people voice about, you know, town government, and I'm not trying to be critical of you in saying that, but since there is that sense out there among some people, I don't count myself among that group, but since it is out there, I think you really want to speak with as much clarity as you can in order to build that trust, so that people know what they're voting on and what the outcomes might be. I can very, I can imagine that if you had both articles being voted on separately, that Article Nine might go down and not get two-thirds majority. Article Ten would get two-thirds majority, and then what? But I appreciate what you just said about trying to combine into one single vote, but that will probably have a discussion during town meeting.
Not, not, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. Not combined into a single vote. The discussion would be taken up on both of them, and then there would be a motion on each of them, and it would have to pass or fail. The expectation is one would prevail and the other would not.
Steve, you know what I'm gonna say? And I gotta say it, so hopefully it gets picked up. It totally amazes me that people in Town Hall, people with architectural backgrounds, a Board of Selectmen, that vision, I know people don't want to pay taxes, but they vision for 50 years, they try to vision the best solution for a long-term fix, so we don't have to revisit it, we go over it and over it and over it again. It amazes me that they think we're so invested in these things, that we're making them an agenda, and that we're creating bad government. You've got a chance to vote them up or down. What's the big deal? We're gonna present this one. They didn't like it when we did the whole process. Gonna vote it down. We were gonna do a police and fire, you know, voted. I don't understand the process. We got a Saturday meeting, and we tried to listen to the people who were at that meeting. And afterwards, I've had a lot of people saying, "Maybe we're the voter for the police and fire." So I have a real hard time, now we've scaled it down, to try to be definitively responsive to the group of voters in our town to fixing Town Hall and building freestanding police station. And if that gets voted down, we'll do something else. I mean, none of us are carrying flags. None of us are trying to hoodwink the public. You have a chance to vote twice at the ballot and town meeting. It, the guy owes me.
I just want to be clear that, that this board voted. I mean, we spoke, the, the solution that we feel is the best for the town. And honestly, Steve, to continue to write here, it's not fiscally responsible for the town of Newbury to continue to spend all that money and have a building there. I mean, we were all elected here to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers.
Well, I haven't, I'm not articulately in position one way or the other on Articles Nine and Ten, but I am here to do this because reading what was in the paper, and I'm not casting dispersion on our reporter in the paper either, but rather, I just find myself saying, "Gee, what happens if?"
No, you're, you're right.
That question has been a question for all of us. We've discussed it a number of times, and it, it does not, at present, have a crystal clear answer. Otherwise, we'll give it to you and everybody else. You know, I think that may have been part of the politics behind pushing forward the second proposal, the 4.2, is to make sure that things are good and muddy as we move forward. But that's me casting aspersions.
But the whole thing, and Jen, I just, I think the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator and folks, you know, police, town government, everything else, were just presenting, it sounds like a logical, fiscally responsive, you know, let's cast a straight ship with full sails. If you don't like it, you vote it down. I don't understand controversy. Just vote it down.
Well, again, I guess my bottom line question might be, and this is where you may not have the answer tonight, and I appreciate that, but I'm hoping you will have it for town meeting, is, just for the sake of argument, if Article Nine were voted down, but Article Ten did pass at town meeting, where you go to the ballot, and let's say it passes at the ballot, would that mean that you would be able to build the police station in accordance with Article Ten, that the money could become available to build the police station, which I hope, as a middle, I hope it's that. And without having to go back to the ballot again in May, as we didn't, what's on the ballot right now for November's election is close enough to Article Ten that we could fund Article Ten if it passed, which is a good thing, because I would like to see everything stop, speaking for myself. And again, I haven't discussed this with other people, or rather, I'm just reacting to whatever.
Thoughts on the first hurdle in a long race here? Say both do pass, we have to hire the OPM, then it all has to go up a bid. What if the bids don't reflect what the article reflects? What if the bids all come in higher? Now we have to regroup again.
It's dead all over.
Yeah, so we need to seriously think about this. And that's a process I don't know if everybody's really taken into consideration. Yes, it's true. If both pass, Damon's gonna be happy. Okay? My fear is if both fail.
Damon is not gonna be happy.
Okay? Mine is if both fail. That's my fear.
I hear it.
We need to do something here. We need to get it together, get it done.
And I think it's called moving forward, so.
I know where I placed my bets, but yeah, I just wanted to come in, as much as anything, we highlighted the need to try and be clear in what you say during the town meeting, so the people.
There's no tongue-in-cheek, no words of kin. It's good to get it out.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. You know what? Can I just dovetail on that for a second?
Sure.
We, the Board of Selectmen, had submitted a letter to the editor back when we had the last override on there, and they ran it for us in the Daily News. And I'd like to submit something again, signed by us. I don't know how you feel.
I'd wanna read it first.
Well, yeah.
We read the last one.
Do you want to write it? Damon, do you want to write it?
No, no, no. I just think, I think. I just think, I think, I don't think...
That's why we ran last one.
I don't think that's a bad idea, maybe I, I just think it's very important that it's, I have found that it's not easy to build something that's municipal in the state of Massachusetts. Am I wrong in saying that, Tracy?
You are so right.
But I mean, if it's over a million point five, you have to hang from, you know, a bar upside down.
Upside down, you chose.
I mean, it's just, and it's hard to know, I mean, I've sat with Eric a lot, Martha, who is an architect, understands these things. I was pretty surprised, Martha, the state, are all states as hard to build a municipal building in, or is it kind of Massachusetts at the top of the list, in the middle? It's high.
I honestly don't know, Massachusetts is the only state that I've worked in, and I think it's probably more complicated than many.
Because it's different triggers, just trigger a whole different cast of systems that go in place that cost so much money.
One state, my friend and neighbor Bernie Fields was at the Saturday meeting, and he said, why don't you just build a Morton Building? And I got to admit, at first, I barked at them. And then I got thinking about it, thinking about it, and I discussed it with selectmen who called me. And I said, why don't you call them? So he did. They said, he asked him, do you build police stations? Yes, yes, we do. We need one built in Newbury, Massachusetts. We will not build a municipal project in Massachusetts. That's huge. That Morton is a large company, and they will not build one here. That is a clue of how convoluted these laws are.
And I think that was a, a regional Morton franchise or whatever, and just, he said, it's just not worth his time. It's just too hot.
I wish we had that answer a long time ago, when people kept shouting about Morton Building.
Yeah, I did, and I called them.
So yeah, I called them.
So, that being said, any other discussions we move forward from this?
That was the citizens' concern.
That's it, I guess.
Yep, correspondence.
All right, thanks, Steve. Let me read this one. You were constantly invited at the grand opening, I'm sure everyone else has read this, but it is on Friday, October fourteenth, and it is, we need to attend as many of our selectmen as possible, but it is, as I understand it, it's the Memorial Field, and it's their grand opening, right? Is there a game that night, too?
Yeah, I'm, yes.
There's a game.
There's a game. So we, we should be there if we can by six P.M.
If you want to park.
Yeah, where is that going to be, the same place?
You get preferred, preferred parking, you can get by six.
Same place in front?
Yeah, you hit the little thing there.
I will be, I will try to attend for sure, I do have, believe it or not, they, we have a documentary on the marsh and they're filming, so, but I think I can get there. Everyone else going to be...
I'm able to go.
All right, so we'll have some, some folks there.
I have a meeting planned there.
Huh?
So I have a meeting planned.
All right, the second piece of correspondence, without going back to my agenda, is an Essex County Open Space Conference. It is on Saturday, November twelfth, two thousand sixteen, from eight A.M. to two thirty P.M. at the street. It seems like it is for municipal staff, board, and committee members and other volunteers engaged in land preservation and management. So I didn't say where it was, but if anyone needs to find that out, they can contact Allison.
It's at Northern Essex Community College.
Northern Essex Community College. Review of meeting minutes, September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. In the copy that I got, it says September thirteenth from the date, and even though I was not at the meeting, I think that should be corrected. So I don't know if that needs to be made as amendment or something.
Motion, motion to pass the amended September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting minutes. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, good catch. Aye. Meeting minutes, motion, October third, two thousand sixteen.
Motion to approve is written.
Sorry. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Warrants, do we have warrants to sign?
Motion to sign warrants.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting updates?
What's the difference between meeting updates and boards and committee reports?
You spoke on boards and committee reports, it's different, than the meeting updates.
What's the difference?
You could, you could, either one, either one would be fine.
Can we take one off? Okay.
You know what, it's always been that way, though. Because a board, a board and committee meeting, really, I should imagine by that, would be if you had a board like the planning board, and went to that meeting, that would be an update from them. It's different than like a meeting update, we went to a, for like the Pink House. So there might be a difference. Executive session? Seeing, hearing, none? Motion to adjourn.
So moved, sorry.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.